Thirty degrees.
Oh.
Okay, welcome to the regularly scheduled, well, actually, this is a special city council close session pursuant to section 54956 of the California Government Code, a special meeting of the city council hereby called for August 8, 2023, 5:45 PM. We do have a quorum. Myra, could I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Vandoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Present.
Mayor Bryant?
Here.
And let the record reflect that Councilmember Pearson is absent.
Thank you. Could you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will open public comments. I'll turn to you, Margaret.
I received zero written public comments for this portion of the agenda. We'll take public comments in the council chambers, followed by Zoom. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak under public comments. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are on the closed session agenda, and I have no hands raised in Zoom and no speaker cards.
Okay, at this time, we will close public comments. Do I have a motion for recess to close session?
So moved. Second?
I have a first and a second, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We are in recess. Thank you.
For those of you on Zoom, the City Council is still in closed session and the meeting will resume shortly.
Thank you for joining us today.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 8th, 2023 regularly scheduled council meeting. We do have a quorum. We will be reconvening from closed session. And Margaret, could I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Present.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here. And at this time, our city attorney will be reporting out from closed session.
Tonight, the city council voted 5-0 to initiate an adjudicatory proceeding. The proceeding, parties, and other information shall, once the matter is formally commenced, be disclosed upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the city's ability to serve parties to the matter and/or conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage.
Thank you. If you could join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
At this time, we will open public comments. I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
I received zero written public comments for this section of the agenda. We'll take public comments in the council chambers, followed by Zoom comment. And if you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak under public comment. If you're participating, if you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda, items listed in our presentations, informational reports on the consent calendar, and requests for future agenda items, new requests. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda, and if appropriate, staff will follow up on them with you directly. And a speaker may not allocate his or her time to another speaker. I have three speaker cards in person. I'll start with Yildaz.
Good evening, Mayor Bryant, council members, and the city staff. I would like to talk about two different topics tonight. The first one is about national night out. I am here on behalf of Deer Ridge, Shadow Lakes, and Bramwood Hills Neighborhood Watch volunteers. Unfortunately, our lead person, Linda Nagashi, should not make it, could not make it today. We would like to thank Mayor Bryant and Captain David Schroeder for their visit to Deer Ridge and Bramwood Hills National Night Out locations. We also would like to thank Bramwood Police Department Chief Herbert and his team's visit to the Shadow Lakes East County Road location. There are very nice photos from those three events on the Bramwood Police Department's website. Mayor Bryant and the Captain David Schroeder took their time to answer residents' questions. They spent their time generously. We really appreciate that. It seems everyone appreciated having them around. Thank you again for your visit and supporting Neighborhood Watch activities. Thanks also to Officer Lindsay for engaging with the residents. At my second part of the talk about our neighborhood in Deer Ridge, we know our police department and the city are working hard to keep us safe while we have high-crime neighboring city like Antioch. But we all must be vigilant and be aware of what is changing in our neighborhood, such as proposed bar and restaurant business in the residential neighborhood, at the closed golf courses clubhouse in Deer Ridge, which is a couple blocks from the elementary school. Please remember what happened on July 14 at the Chili Court Bramwood. It was homicide after the profit party at the residential house. Someone killed in front of the house. If you approve of the bars and restaurant business in the middle of the residential area, you do not have control of the drunk drivers or what happens at the parties. Our peace and safety are more important than policing prominent businessmen who just want to make more profit. If more people want to have a nightclub at that location, are you going to allow it? Please do the right things and not bring trouble in our neighborhood. Please do not approve such a business in the middle of the residential neighborhood, which is surrounded elementary, middle, and high school. People prefer to live in our neighborhood for the schools, not for the bar. Originally, closed clubhouse allowed there because of the DR golf course. Otherwise, it will be an open space according to the city's general plan. Deer Ridge Golf Course is closed, and the clubhouse should be demolished a long time ago. The neighbors at the Chili Court warned the city ahead of time before the homicide happened. Unfortunately, their voices could not be heard. Now, we are doing the same things and warning you. Hope you can see through. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mariana.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. So I visited City Hall meetings several months ago to thank for support for Ukraine. And today, I'm here again to express my gratitude. So first, it's a national night out. We are volunteers for Neighborhood Watch, and I do appreciate the opportunity for new kids on the block, because we are only for two years in Brentwood, to get closer to our community, to understand better. And when city management and police officers visited us, it was a huge input, and we do express gratitude towards this. And talking about our police, I would like to thank and express gratitude to our chief, Tim Herbert, because we were super lucky. And me and my husband, we were elected for Citizens Police Academy. And it's wonderful opportunity for everyone who wants to understand why our police does such a great job and how difficult it is. And I would like to express full support for any safety initiatives towards this kind of inputs for our community. And the third topic that I would like to express my gratitude, it's 1st of July, and we visited several events, and starting with a parade. And at the end of the day, it was wonderful drone show. I know that city received not only good feedback, but we, as people like from high-tech industry, we do appreciate this type of entertainment. It's safe. It's wonderful, and I think it's kind of educational. And this is how we see the future of entertainment, something high-tech, something from 21st century. So thank you so much for making this wonderful event for us, for citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Denise Duran.
All grace. Good evening. Thank you for the time tonight. Well, good to see you, Mayor Bryant. Welcome back. And our city council. I just wanted to say a quick, offer my little update, as I do, and say what an incredible event we had with Celebrate Brentwood earlier. Time is passing quickly. And we have so many people that actually participate on Zoom, I've learned, with city council members. I wanted to give a quick shout out to our winners of Celebrate Brentwood, which were all nominated by the public. And so for Youth of the Year was Owen Spishock. Employee of the Year was Letitia Cordero. Startup of the Year was Resilient Healthcare. Our Nonprofit of the Year was the Brentwood Rotary Club. Citizen of the Year was Chris Romero. And the Business of the Year, little business some people may have heard of, Brentwood Craft Beer and Cider. And I stated in the program that anybody who was nominated was already walking in a winner. Because in a city of 64,000 and with 5,000-plus businesses, to be nominated, to be in the top three of any of these, any of these categories is truly remarkable. So I just wanted to say thank you again to all those who continue to put in and make the city so fantastic and great. And with Celebrate Brentwood concluding, that certainly does not mean that the party is stopping with the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce. Coming up next is literally the party, the grand party, La Gran Fiesta, where we'll be celebrating and honoring the Hispanic heritage and the rich cultures and our chairman of that, Tony Aguilar's. This is his second year doing it, and he is doing a bang-up job. In fact, I can't even do justice to what he would say, but just to give a little bit of information as to what you can prepare yourself to come and attend is absolutely free. We already are filled with vendors, food vendors, so it's going to be a very delicious event. We already have wonderful, wonderful vendors, dancers, performers, who will be participating at downtown City Park. And it's going to just be a really fantastic opportunity to connect again with those in our community and beyond. And speaking of which, we don't just do parties. We also have our business development, such as the Brentwood Power Network. So if you want to get to know who those players are in the city, just go onto thebrentwoodchamber.com. There's a little place you can say register, and you'll get a link, and you can go and talk to those who are also continuing to build business here in Brentwood. And I just wanted to also offer that being a member of the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce does not mean you have to have a business. We have fantastic members who are retired and very active because they want to be involved in the community. We have parents who are members of the Chamber of Commerce because, again, they want to be involved and connected to the community. So you don't have to have a business in order to be a member. In fact, there's financially beneficial rates or reasons for joining the Brentwood Chamber if you're not a business, although we are still quite affordable. And with that being said, I am one little thing is, we were contacted by American Pickers, which is from the History Channel. So who do you know who might have some piece of history that the nation and beyond would be interested in learning about? They're coming here. So if you're interested, or if you have something, or you know somebody who has some amazing relics of our community, then be sure to go onto chamber.com, atbrentwoodchamber.com, so that you can learn more and pass this information on. We did pass this on to the East County Historical Society, as well as Harvest Time, because we know that there's just some amazing resources there as well. So with that being said...
Madam President, you weren't at the actual counting of the votes for the Citizen of the Year and all the businesses, as it was done very confidentially. But I did want to give a quick shout out to our Vice Mayor, Susanna, who came and was our proctor. She was the one that made sure it was all up and up, and we can't thank you enough for coming out and helping. And she did more. She actually helped us count because there were so many votes. So thank you again.
Time. Thank you. The next speaker is Olga Vidriales.
Good evening, Mayor Bryant and city council members. I'm going to sound like a cheerleader, forgive me, but I want to just echo, I was at the Celebrating Brentwood, and it was a wonderful event. About 180 tickets were sold. Everybody was dressed just to the nines. It was beautiful. We honored a lot of people who have been doing great in the city of Brentwood for decades. We had Youth, he's here tonight, he was a nominee. We had Craft Beer and Cider, who was the Business of the Year. We had Mr. Chris Romero, who has been doing, again, decades of work. So I am just so proud of the chamber for having that event. I want to give a big shout out to our chief, Herbert, because he was there to support Michael Rucker, who was nominated in two categories. I just think it's great that a person of your position can actually come out and show the community that you are behind us. Thank you for that. And thank you for bringing your wife. Also, council member Tony and Pat Anisha, forgive me for addressing you by first name, but thank you so much for coming out with your spouses. It's great that you show the community, the business community, the community at large, that you care and that you are present. It speaks volumes. I've heard a lot of back chatter that we're so proud that we have people again in all your position representing Brentwood. I'm going to keep it positive, but our city manager wasn't there, and I look forward to seeing you at next year's event, as well as our assistant city manager. I know, we're all busy. We all have things to do. You're doing good work all over, but it would be great to see you guys. I see you at a lot of mixers. And again, your presence is much appreciated. I think you're showing the community as well that you really are involved, and you care about what's going on in Brentwood. So thank you all. That's it. I give up my time to anybody else who wants to take it. But thank you very much. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ian.
Good evening, council. It's been a while since, you know, I've been in the chamber and been up here, especially since we turned off the youth commission. So today, it's going to be a different comment than I normally do. On the intersection of, it's more towards our interim director of public works, but at the intersection of San Jose and Fairview, in the early, early morning hours, like 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, the traffic signal does not detect the car on San Jose. It's on a timer, and it only, like, cares for Fairview. I have had to make a left turn and go all the way down towards church and make a U-turn to head up towards Sand Creek to get to work. So if the city, you know, city staff can, like, check in. I know the county does some maintenance for our traffic lights in the area. And also, I just want to admit, the groundbreaking today at the Sand Creek, you know, road extension, even though it's two weeks after actual groundbreaking happened, ironically, it was not very appetizing to the public. I wasn't sure it was just meant to be private, but I felt like the public should have been allowed to come out and, like, celebrate such an important road for our city and the city of Antioch to connect us all the way down to Kaiser Permanente. I would love to have been there. A lot of people sure would have been down there. It's more about making it better in Brentwood with fanfare, just in the future for bigger projects, you know? Try and make a more public ground openings instead of just, like, during business hours randomly do, you know, do a follow-up, like, that doesn't sit well with me. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have three hands raised in Zoom. I'll start with Tara Bosini. Tara, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council members, as well as city staff. Thank you for hearing me this evening. I wanted to speak about the Brentwood Golf Course, located at 100 Somerset Drive, for a few reasons. First, and most importantly, is because of the dog that is being employed as a guard dog at the facility. It's currently being tethered all day and all night. I have visited the dog during the, like, the middle of the night, just to make sure that it is being tethered there all night, and it is. This dog is being neglected, abused, for the purpose of this facility and this business. I don't agree with how this dog is being treated, and I would like the city to consider adding this to their agenda, to research it further, and maybe even impose a city ordinance on tethering a dog even when it's on a pulley system, or even just leaving a dog outside all day and night in extreme weather conditions. Another reason why I'd like to speak about the Brentwood Golf Course is because I am very disappointed in the planning commission's approval and passing of Resolution 23-027 for the Design Review Amendment, DR 20-00982, for the paved outdoor equipment, storage, and maintenance yard for the Brentwood Golf Course. Why does the Brentwood Golf Course need a 100-yard brightly illuminated football field in front of the Somerset residence located at Bonini Lane and Katy Way? I wonder why this facility or the structure can't be relocated closer to the service gate that's on Somerset and Balfour. That way, they can utilize the service gate that's already located there. This would be further away from the residence of Somerset. The lighting... The lighting on this facility was originally planned for 24 feet, it was reduced down to 18 feet. This will still cause a lot of light to go in on the Residence of Katy, on Katy Way. I'd like that lighting to be considered to be reduced down to 10 feet, since the, the fencing height was to, set to be reduced from eight feet to seven. I think 10 feet high, which is three feet above the fence line, would well illuminate the areas of use in the early morning when the staff arrives for the, this yard is not used overnight, the facility is not a 24-hour facility, so maybe even the city can consider making the Brentwood Golf Course shut those lights off after 10:00 PM at night, or even after 9:00 PM, and not turned on until the staff arrives in the morning. Also, not to be allowed to install a dog kennel, which the, the COO of the golf course, Rex Cho, has already procured and expressed that he intends to install in the golf course. What is the point of having a guard dog if they're not free to, to guard the facility that they're intended to guard? The tether that the dog is currently on is also no help in that regard. I would also like the city to consider to reduce the size of the yard from 100 yards to perhaps half of the size. I'm actually a golf patron. I have been my entire life, my, my grandfather pretty much brought me up on Poplar Creek, which is located in Coyote Point of San Mateo. I would like the city to look at Poplar Creek's Maintenance Yard, which is located, I believe, at the corner of Poplar, I'd have to look at, in Bay Shore Boulevard, I think it is. The facility that they have is much cleaner than the, the facility at the Brentwood Golf Course. The Brentwood Golf Course facility is just like a garbage dump. If you look at even just the aerial shot from Google, you can see how well theirs is maintained, it's clean, their vehicles are parked in specific spots, their sand is in little wooden cubbies, the, the shed is clear of anything around it, there's no debris or garbage anywhere, it's very, very clean. I would like the Brentwood Golf Course to, to bring their, their yard up to that standard and that level, because current, I also have concerns of pests and rodents, since I do, I have visited that, the dog that is there in the middle of the night, I have seen rats and pests in that, that temporary structure within all the debris and all the junk that is located there, there's also...
The speaker's time has expired. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I want to thank the people who do landscaping maintenance in Brentwood. There were massively overgrown weeds on San Jose heading towards Fairview, causing Brentwood, Bristow students to have to walk on the street with traffic after school, and also bike riders were getting hit in the face as they were going home because the weeds were on a bend as the street kind of turns, you couldn't see them until you were right up against them. So I opened a ticket, and I was told I was 10th on the list, but 24 hours later, everything had been neatly landscaped, and it's lovely to see that the kids can actually stay on the sidewalk and not have to navigate all the traffic after school, everybody trying to go home. I also wanted to mention that the Brentwood Press's behavior at the last meeting was nothing short of ambulance chasing. People were traumatized and scared and do not need to relieve the trauma for your convenience, Mr. Gregg. Have some sympathy and get their testimony from replay, or do what journalists do and go to them, but don't ask them to come to you. That was in really poor taste. Chief of Police, Herbert, I, I know the Brentwood Police Department does a really good job, but I wanted to let you know that I was seriously astonished and disappointed that your first statement after people courageously came and gave public comment about a terrible situation that caused them tremendous trauma was to say, "We didn't get any calls." Not a statement of sympathy, not an offer of a solution. That wasn't your first go-to. You could have easily said, you know, "I hear you, and what I can offer you are additional patrols on weekend nights to make sure that if there is another party before you have a chance to call us, we can get there." You, you immediately went into protection mode, which is not the right approach. I would hope in the future, should there be another incident of this type, you will lead in being a deterrent instead of merely showing up after the damage is done. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there in person, I just got back from doing some donation stuff. It, a couple of comments. One, the two folks, not Carolina, but the two folks that were asking for specific items to do with the golf course, it reminds me of a conversation I had with one of you regarding what it is the city can and cannot do. Because I was surprised about a couple of things the city couldn't do. And I had suggested, maybe as a future agenda item, to, maybe not at 100,000 feet, and maybe not at 3,000 feet, but somewhere in the middle, tell folks what it is the city can do, can't do, what you as the council can or can't do. I think that that will alleviate a lot of the tension. I know, most days, it helps alleviate my tension, then I find something else, but be that as it may. With respect to what Carolina said, I, I'm not sure what emotion would best fit my feeling towards how it was handled, the tragedy, and how, you know, the, can't say it any better than excuses that were thrown up, especially in hearing the folks that live there. And I think I said this the last time, to have the strength and the courage to come out and say a person's name, give an address, give details that are unique to that circumstance, and have the chief, his very first comment, as Carolina said, "We didn't get any calls." Never mind the, I can't find that hard to believe because I can't believe that, it just doesn't make sense. If there's anything about parties in Brentwood, they're usually called upon pretty quickly. But it seemed like he was prepared for that answer, which is now a wee bit interesting as well. You know, how, honestly, and I hope this is a future agenda item, when did the police know? And, and what did the police, you know, when did they know and when did they do anything? Was everything reactionary? Was there anything that could have been done proactively? And the last thing is, we have to accept the fact that we're going to have massive bills. It's going to be one of the things discussed tonight. I hope that we can, two things. One, put some more support behind planning, because they are the vanguard of what is suitable. And with that in mind, planning needs to really stick to their guns and not just accept anything. We can't help stop building, but we can halt what is considered good. We have to raise that bar and maintain it. We can't stop the building, but we can certainly stop having our city just not look like the city that we all live and love. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised in Zoom, and I have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, then, we will close public comments and move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaison, and staff. And I'll start to my right at this time, Councilmember Mendoza.
Hello. Since the last time we met, I attended a Cali meeting discussing the population ships, ships and the builder's remedy, attended Janet Frazier's Women of the Year Celebration hosted by Senator Glazer, attended National Night Out, discussions with residents around house parties, we heard it during public comment, it's, it's been one of the top things I've been called about. Watched the Contra Costa County meeting where they discussed an affordable housing bond. It's interesting, we won't get any say on the housing bond, it goes to the county, and then we then maybe get some money. It's feeling like Measure X where we have to go beg for pennies, so I'm not too happy about it. Another Cali meeting the next weekend with Senator Nielo discussing, discussion around land use and housing bills. Watched the Planning Commission meeting, had city manager and city attorney reviews with our consultants, and attended today the Sand Creek groundbreaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson.
Still in one from Councilmember Mendoza. So I also did the evaluations for our city manager and city attorney, went to the National Night Out event in various locations, which was phenomenal, it was a lot of fun, it was happy to be out and meet a lot of people in our neighborhoods, and watched the Planning Commission meeting, really fun night out, got to finally wear those dresses that have been in the closet since COVID, at the Chamber of Commerce Gala for Celebrating Brentwood, it was electric a night. And today, which was phenomenal, was being at the Sand Creek Extension Groundbreaking Event.
Thank you. Councilmember Orland.
Thank you. I, right after the last meeting, I attended the Tri Delta Transit Meeting. I attended the Chambers Gala and Celebrate Brentwood, amazing event, a lot of fun. I watched the Planning Commission meeting. I also attended the Woman of the Year Award given by Senator Glazer to Janet Frazier. I attended National Night Out with the Police Department. I was asked by the Town Downtown Coalition to be a judge for the Rockin' Rides Car Show on Sunday. It was an amazing event, a lot of really beautiful cars. I attended the Powell Board Meeting, the City Manager and City Attorney Evaluations, and lastly, the groundbreaking ceremony for Sand Creek this afternoon. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I attended the League of Cities East Bay Division Meeting with a presentation by Governor Newsom, Senior Advisor on Homelessness and an A-BAG MTC Executive Director. I presented at the Liberty Union High School District Annual Convocation to Launch the New School Year and thank all of our teachers. Attended the Dream Team Celebration Shooting for Success. It's, it's an initiative dedicated to providing young boys aged nine to 11 with transformative opportunities to play competitive basketball and engaged in comprehensive manhood development program. I wrote that down because it was kind of a neat thing, neat way they put it. The event was actually in Antioch, but we got invited in Brentwood because, of course, they're interested in moving a program like that here. Watched the Planning Commission meeting, attended Senator Steve Glazer's event to recognize his Woman of the Year, Janet Frazier, and it was held here because Janet's nonprofit network of care accomplishes its mission through supportive work by our special education high school classes. Attended National Night Out, thank you to Trilogy, Two Sites and Shadow Lakes, and Encanto Communities for the Invitations. Perfect example of why Brentwood is such a great city to raise families and have community and be together. California Alliance of Local Elections Meeting with Senator Nielo, the Sand Creek Road Extension Groundbreaking Ceremony, and of course, the evaluations for City Manager and City Attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any report out?
No, but just want to offer one little clarification. Normally, we have groundbreaking ceremonies invite the public, that's part of the purpose of such ceremonies, to invite them to participate. Due to the location and the construction work having already begun and limited parking, we didn't feel that they would be safe for the public to be there in the same regard. I wish we could have done things a little differently. Definitely any future groundbreakings and any ribbon cuttings that will hold there, well, the public will certainly be invited, so we look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. And since the last time we met, of course, I did attend today the Sand Creek Boulevard Ceremony. And again, I want to publicly thank the members of the ECRFA Board, East County Regional Fee and Finance Authority is what that stands for. They are the body that funded the, the connection, and it, it is a, a body that is representative of East County cities, in addition to our supervisor, Diane Burgess, and it has to have a unanimous vote. All five members have to vote affirmative in order to reprioritize the funding, and they were willing to do so. This progress on Sand Creek was something that the city's been working on for a couple of decades now, and it is going to save the lives of our residents, not only in the, removing the necessity of going out on Deer Valley and all the dangerous curves that can be out there, but also if someone is being transported by a, a medical ambulance, the time savings alone can be anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes, depending upon the circumstances. And so, the, the fact that it is going to help economic development as well as protect our families is something that we can all look forward to taking advantage of. So I want to thank everyone that's been involved in getting that done over the years, all of the different council members, the city staff, which does an outstanding job, and everyone involved in that. I attended the Downtown Business Coalition Rockin' Rides Car Show. One of my favorite things about this year's car show was that the winner of the Best in Show is a local couple who have lived here for, in excess of 60 years, and they've raised their families here, and they, it, it's wonderful to have an event that our families can be recognized for, for their involvement, and also, it was a 1928 Hudson, that was museum concourse quality. The fact that we have a local resident that, that is able to, to do that is, is just amazing and share it with our community. Want to thank the Downtown Business Coalition and all of our families that participated. It was hot, but it was a lot of fun. Also, I attended the National Night Out. I want to thank all the families that are involved. I know it, it takes a lot of effort to work with your neighborhood, to get everyone together, and it's always great to meet our neighbors and hear what you have to say, your concerns, and, and your evaluation of, of the city of Brentwood as a place to live, so thank you for that. I attended the Mayor's Conference where we had a presentation from Supervisor John Joya regarding the homeless concerns in Contra Costa County and throughout the state, and the, the ultimate report was, there are very many different components to why we have these issues, and we're trying to, as a state and a county, and each city involved, trying to figure out the best way to provide services for those that are suffering from be, being unhoused, as well as the challenges that go along with it, drug abuse, drug addiction, and mental health issues as well. And we are working as a state to try to remedy the cause and the effect of that, but shockingly, and that's very, very much with tongue-in-cheek, there are no easy answers and there's no one magic answer. It's going to take a lot of work together and cumulative efforts at a state level to, to provide help for, for our homeless situation. Attended the Tri Delta Transit Committee. Also with Tri Delta, we, we toured a company called Gillig Manufacturing. They are the company that make the buses that Tri Delta Transit purchases. They are made 100% in the United States of America in Livermore. And so, we have residents that live here in Brentwood that, that work there as well, and the focus on electric environmental buses, as well as the, the, the gas buses, natural gas buses are ongoing, and the, the ultimate goal is to have a zero emission and zero greenhouse impact and carbon impact. And so, I'm glad to say that Tri Delta is doing business with companies that keep that in mind as, as a priority. Also, I attended the Transplan, ECRFA, State Route Four Bypass Authority Meeting as well, and at this time, I have nothing further to report. So we will move into... So we will move into Item E, the Consent Calendar. And do I have a motion regarding the consent calendar or any items you'd like to pull?
I make a motion to adopt consent calendar.
A second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is unanimous. It passes. Item E2, Silvergate Communities LP Off-Site Public Improvements for Maintenance. And do I have a motion to adopt the consent cal-- oh, this is, I'm sorry. It's been so long since we've been here. We're on F now. We went all the way through that. Item F1, our next item is an extension of the interim urgency ordinance adopted June 27, approving interim objective design standards. And Jennifer Hagan will report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tonight, we're here to review an extension of the Urgency Ordinance to maintain interim objective design standards. Various state laws, including SB 330, prevent jurisdictions from imposing or enforcing new design standards on housing projects that are not objective. To ensure that projects deliver high-quality design, the city adopted an Urgency Ordinance approving interim objective design standards while the city develops a more robust set of residential design and development standards. Tonight, staff is recommending that the City Council extend this ordinance. The current residential design guidelines were adopted in 2006. The guidelines as currently written specifically state that these may not apply in all individual cases to all housing types, but provide guidance for those elements that most frequently occur regardless of the housing type or density. While the guidelines have helped to articulate the community's vision in the past, since they were adopted to provide guidance and not as development standards, they are currently difficult to enforce, and many of the guidelines are subjective and may be argued to contain ambiguous or unclear standards for review of new development, which has not always resulted in a consistent interpretation over time. Projects that were deemed complete prior to this Urgency Ordinance are not subject to the objective design standards to be extended tonight. Those projects deemed complete prior are only required to show consistency with the objective quantifiable development standards within the city's zoning ordinance. The objective standards are objective and quantifiable in contrast to the subjective guidelines that might demand an interpretation or judgment on the part of the decision makers. Consistent with the requirements of recent and pending legislation, the objective design standards are intended to provide a base for the review and approval for residential projects. The Urgency Ordinance tonight would extend the ordinance adopted by City Council on June 27 by 10 months and 15 days to May 12, 2024. As we continue to move forward, staff is currently working on reviewing the existing residential design guidelines to be utilized as a base for the future standards in order to continue to respect the past while embracing the future of Brentwood. It is anticipated that community outreach for the final standards will start in the next few months. The final comprehensive set of objective design standards would be subject to review by both the Planning Commission and City Council prior to adoption. And with that, staff is recommending that the City Council extend the adopted Urgency Ordinance before you tonight, extending the interim objective design standards. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions of staff, to staff from council? Okay, thank you. Then at this time, I will now open the public hearing and turn it to you, Margaret, public comments.
This is the time to comment on Agenda Item F1. No comments were received via email prior to the meeting. If you're in person, please file a speaker card on the form provided at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have one hand raised. I'll call on Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a couple of thoughts on this. One was that I really like the idea of having objective standards. I am on the Planning Commission, and I'm also a very, I'm a technical person. So having specific standards, I think, will make it easier for all of us on the Planning Commission and City Council to make decisions without having to worry so much about, should we make an exception in this case? Should we do this? Should we do that? I'd actually like to see the same process undergone for the commercial standards, the commercial guidelines, even though there's no state impetus to do that. It just makes the job easier. The other thing that I, and also it makes it easier for us to protect the standards that make Brentwood a special place to live, and I think the whole, the public will appreciate that. The other thing is just a minor thing, roofing tiles in the interim guidelines. Roofing tiles are specified, and I think that we should include solar roofing tiles as roofing tiles or clarify that solar roofing tiles qualify as roofing tiles for the simple reason that the state is now mandating solar power on the rooftop anyway. And I just think that where a builder has the choice and might want to put on solar roofing tiles because they present a nicer appearance than, you know, the floating solar panels that live on top of the roof, I think they should be encouraged to do that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have one additional hand raised in Zoom. I'll call on Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. And Rod said it perfectly and what I had said earlier. We really need to stand behind the Planning Commission. Whether you maintain the emergency mandate or we have to go with the default system, we have to rely on our Planning Commission to do the right thing. You folks are the ones that appointed them, and they've been doing a fantastic job. And as an aside, I want to thank CINO for his shenanigans two weeks ago because I think it gave our two newer members of the council a chance to see why folks like me, I guess, are so adamant on what people try to pull, specifically CINO. And I could, as I was reading the faces of you folks, I could see that in particularly Councilwoman Pearson. And then the fact that she had to pull away from her family because of a CINO trick. Ms. Pearson, he does that all the time. So you just got to be ready for it. But back to the reason for this call, yes, I hope we are able to maintain control of our standards. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comment, and I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Moving to council discussion. Is there any further discussion regarding this item? And if not, do I have a motion?
No discussion. So as detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt an ordinance to approve an extension of the interim urgency ordinance adopted June 27, approving interim objective design standards.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor. Aye?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just before we get there, can we check in with the city clerk for a reading of the ordinance title?
Yes, thank you so much, Margaret.
Thank you. The Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood, extending the interim ordinance and adopting Appendix B to the City of Brentwood Residential Design Guidelines to implement interim residential objective design standards and finding that the action, finding the action exempt from CEQA.
Thank you. Now, do I have a motion on this item?
I stated previously as seconded.
Okay, we have a first and seconds. All in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Item moves. Thank you. Moving into Item F2, our next agenda is a call for review of the Planning Commission's decision to approve applications for a vesting tentative subdivision map and design review for Trumont Trailside, and Jennifer Hagan will present. Jennifer?
Can I make a comment real quick? Because I pulled it for review, can I just make a comment real quick about the rationale before? Because you might not need to go through the whole thing, is what I'm thinking. The reason I pulled it for review is because it was going to go to design review, and the timing between design review and us, like, I didn't know what they were going to do, but I was told I only have 10 days. So if it goes and I miss the days, then I'm kind of out. So I had to pull it. So I think that's something we need to work out on the background is the timing of that. But there's only two things. I don't even know if we need to go through the whole thing. There's only two things. The concrete tiles and the bump outs, which the developer said they would do, but because of the way it happened, like, it never got to go to design review. So I think, I don't know if you guys want to listen to this whole thing, but if the developer wants to do those two things, and those are the only two things that I think were under consideration unless... Oh, you want to speak? Go ahead.
I certainly didn't mean to cut you off. I was just going to say, since a call up does trigger a de novo review, it's a whole new hearing of the item. We need to have a complete record. So your conversation can be as long or as brief as you like it to be, but I don't know that it'll change Ms. Hagan's presentation that much, just to think about.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you. So tonight's application is a call for review of the Planning Commission's approval of vesting tentative subdivision map 9610 to create 63 residential lots, as well as design review application DR 22006 for the homes to be constructed on those lots, which would include 57 single-family detached homes and six affordable duets. The project site consists of two parcels that are currently undeveloped and that have historically been utilized for agricultural purposes. The general plan designates the 20.9 acre site as low-density residential, allowing for a density range of 1.1 to 5 dwelling units per acre with a mid-range of 3 dwelling units per acre. The project would result with an overall density of 3 dwelling units per acre consistent with the general plan midpoint policy. Access to the site would be via the existing streets, Strat Haven Place and Montclair Place that have been stubbed to the northern edge of the site by previous developments. These access points to the site have been planned for in the city's general plan and in place since 2003. The streets will continue in width with sidewalks connecting the existing sidewalk and provide pedestrian access through the development. The adjacent Parkside Villas Project, which is currently under construction, includes a trail along the project frontage along Sand Creek that will connect to the western property line of the creek and continue as part of the project. And in addition, there is an existing pedestrian bridge that crosses Sand Creek within the proposed open space buffer, which we propose to be improved with new handrails and provide access to the sports park across. The project is zoned PD 35 Sub Area K, and since the project was deemed complete in May of 2022, the recent adopted objective design standards are not applicable, and the project may be reviewed against the current PD standards as shown here. Based on the zoning and the required minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, the proposed lots meet all PD zoning requirements. In addition, the adjacent existing Ranchette Estate Lot would have a 30,000 square foot lot adjacent to it in size, meaning the transition zoning requirement. The proposed architecture allows for increased variation of building design and massing throughout the subdivision. There are three home plans for the market rate units and two home plans for the duet units that include architectural styles of farmhouse, craftsman, and prairie. The preliminary landscape plans provide typical front yard landscaping that includes a variety of drought-tolerant, low-ground cover and does not include lawn area or grass. Per the municipal code, the Affordable Housing Ordinance that was in effect at the time the application was deemed complete is what is required for the project. At the time the subject application was complete in May 2022, the code required a 10% affordable requirement. Under that ordinance, the project is required to provide six affordable units with two reserved for very low-income households, two reserved for low, and two reserved for moderate income, for a total of six units. The project meets all affordable requirements as required by the city ordinance. The City of Brentwood published and mailed all public hearing notices consistent with the code requirements, and the applicant has posted the notice on the project site. Staff received two emails in opposition prior to the Planning Commission and one email ahead of tonight's meeting. On June 20, the Planning Commission considered the vesting tentative map and the design review applications. Discussion of the map included circulation and access into the development, and staff provided clarification on the traffic and circulation and whether there were any other alternative access route and confirmed that as currently designed, the project access points to the site were the only feasible design and have been planned for in the city's general plan and in place since 2003. It also meets all requirements for providing two access points into the development. The discussion for the design review application included questions and concerns related to the applicability of the residential design guidelines to the project in which the commission expressed concerns with the design of the proposed homes. Specifically, it was asked whether there was a precedent related to the approving of the single-story profile homes instead of a true single-story home. Since the design guidelines are a guidance document and not development standards, developments have not been required to utilize true single-story homes for all developments in the past, and the Planning Commission has used its discretion to allow single-story profile on a number of past projects. Questions were also raised regarding the flat elevations on various proposed plans as well as clarification on the roof materials. Following the Planning Commission meeting, the application was called for review. And as I stated, based on the Planning Commission's approval, the design review... Oh, sorry. Ultimately, the Planning Commission approval approved the vesting tentative map based on the architectural concerns. And based on the architectural concerns, they approved conditions as listed here. And as conditioned, the plans were to return to the Design Review Subcommittee for final review on the four identified concerns. Subsequently, the application was called for review. And as I stated, based on the Planning Commission's approval, the Design Review Subcommittee would have considered revisions to the four identified concerns, but the item may now be considered by the City Council instead of the Subcommittee. In addition, since the Planning Commission hearing, the applicant has clarified that they are supportive of including tile roofing on the plans and are supportive of the Planning Commission's request to make the changes in the three remaining identified areas. Based on this, tonight, the City Council has two options before you. The first is tonight's review is if tonight's review results in project approval, the entitlements would be affirmed, including staff's modification to Condition 11C regarding the roof tile. In addition, the City Council could add or amend conditions governing the concerns, and if direction is clearly provided, the council could motion to require the application would no longer require Subcommittee review. The second option would be before you tonight is to have, that would result in the project denial. The City Council would need to provide findings for the denial, and the item would return to City Council at a subsequent meeting. With that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution affirming the Planning Commission's approval for vesting tentative subdivision map 9610 and design review DR 22006 to create the 63 single-family residential lots as further conditioned. And that concludes staff's report. The applicant is here in person, as well as some of their technical experts are on Zoom as well.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions of staff regarding this item? Okay, seeing no questions, I will now open the public hearing. Move to you, Margaret.
I'll call on the applicant first. He'll have 10 minutes.
You could share my screen again, please.
I'll be brief. I'll be brief. But thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers for letting me be here today. I am Pam Salas Needing. I'm the Director of Community Development. And as Jennifer noted, we are joined here today by some of our colleagues, Anna, as well as Garrett, and our attorney, Patricia Curtin. For those of you that may not know, Trumont, we're a local developer. We're down the road in San Ramon. And really, we've been developing high-quality developments for over three decades. And we're really proud and honored to be able to provide homes here in Brentwood. Jennifer already went over this, but basically to orient ourselves on this site, we are west of Fairview, right adjacent to the Sand Creek Trail, and only a half a mile walk along the trail to the streets of Brentwood. So I'll go over three quick items, but I'm going to be extra brief because Jennifer already went through this. So starting with the governing parameters and our project conformance. And as Jennifer had alluded, there's been over 20 years of studies that have gone into the planning for the creation of this parcel as well as the adjacent lands. And really, what we wanted to do is adhere to that and be consistent with all of the work that has gone with the city before. work that has gone with the city before True Mark ever came into the picture. And so what our goal was, and which we achieved, was that consistency of the plan that is before you today. And really, that goal was, number one, consistency with the land use and consistency with the zoning as well. A quick site plan overview, I'm not going to go through the whole development plan of the sixty-three units, but what I did want to bring up was something exciting. When we were planning what this site could look like, one of the things that we thought about was, how can we blend in, integrate into this existing neighborhood? And so if you can see here, none of the homes are parallel to Sand Creek Trail. And that was done with a very specific purpose because we wanted to make sure to maximize not only the connectivity, but also the accessibility to that trail because we're dedicating over two point seven five acres to the city for that open space. So we wanted that accessibility of not just our residents, but also the surrounding residents so they can access that beautiful trail, that two point seven acres of open space that will be eventually dedicated to the city. And then from an architecture, we're really proud of the four different types. And yes, council member, we have committed to doing the tile. And I also have some sneak peeks, since you already went through this, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna, I did this just in case, because I figured it would be a question. So as Jennifer had alluded, planning commission really requested three things, and it was the enhancement of the plan three left elevation, the enhancement of the rear elevation, a rear elevation of the duet units, the concrete tile throughout, which is what we're doing, and as well as some elevation of the side transitions on the corners of all the plans. So I didn't want to, I didn't know exactly what you guys wanted to talk about, council members and mayor. So what I did was I just put in a couple sneak peeks. So this is a sneak peek of Plan Three, that left elevation that planning commission thought could use some enhancements. So on the left-hand side, you have what is existing, and on the right-hand side is those additional enhancements of the windows with the four-piece trim to give it that extra pop that they wanted to see. Now, the most important, I got two examples of these, were the duets. How can we make those duets more beautiful, sticking out? And so this is the top, is what was existing, and the bottom, you see those pop-outs to really kind of make that dormer-type look. So that's what you have here. And then one more quick sneak peek is right here. You have that embellishment of the roof around those two windows, again, to give it that pop of the duet homes. So, and I am around, as well as my colleagues, and I hope you enjoyed the sneak peek. And thank you so much for letting me come up here and present.
Thank you.
I have no, this is the time to comment on this agenda item. One item was received via email, and it's been placed on the city's website in the agendas page. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have one speaker card in person. I'll call on Greg.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Greg. I wanted to kind of come up and talk about some topics with houses and stuff, and I figured this would be a perfect opportunity. Love the idea of this project, especially when I found out that they had a couple of duets in there. One of the things I've been wanting to come and talk to the city about, it reminded me because I was just in Buffalo, New York, a couple of weeks ago for a wedding, and how they had a lot of fourplexes that were part of neighborhoods. But you never knew it from the front of the house because it only had one front door. And then you walk into a hallway, and there's two doors that go to the lower units, and then there's two doors this way that go to upstairs. And they're just at the end of residential neighborhoods. And it's a great way to help with what we're supposed to be doing in having more affordable housing and having more housing on smaller footprint. So just something to think about for the future. The other thing with this development and all developments is we have a lot of trees, and I think that's awesome. But we really have to make sure that one of the things that we look at is that we're planting the right trees between the curb and the sidewalk. The William Lyon homes that I live in, it's like this going down the sidewalk. And all the people are cutting out their trees and doing that because it's buckling the sidewalk. So it's important, I think, for the city architects, plant, uh, planting people, the tree people, the lawn maintenance, as well as the architects, that, that let's pick the right kind of trees so it doesn't buckle our sidewalks, since it's ultimately the responsibility of the resident to fix it if there's a problem. So we should just address that ahead of time. And again, we spent time tonight talking about this, and just want to kind of remind everybody that the council's job is to govern, not to worry about ceiling tiles. And I think we need to remain focused on that, that, that we're here to govern and to put things forward and let the planning commission and all the other department people do their jobs. And I think that would save us all a lot of time. And with that, I thank you for your time.
I have no other speaker cards, and there's no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will close public comments. And if there are no other speakers, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second?
We have a first and a second. Margaret, do we need to go to you before we move forward? Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. And council discussion on this item. Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, as I mentioned, I'm sorry that you had to come out again today. Like, I thought it would just go to the design review, and then depending on them, like, it wouldn't even have to come to us because then I could just hold my review. So thank you so much for taking care of all those details. I think you've been in Brentwood for a while, and you know, we're a little picky on our design and we have really high standards. So although some might not believe it's my role, I'm a resident and I do care about the design standards, so I will continue to worry about it because that's what people call me about. So thank you so much for coming back, and I'm sorry you had to do this.
Any further discussion? Vice Mayor?
I appreciate your presentation. I love what you did with the pop-outs and the elevations, and I think you did a really good job with that. I wanted to just mention very briefly, we did have at least one resident who said, please deny the project. And I think it's important to note, this, this particular planning has been going on since, as you mentioned, as Jennifer mentioned, since two thousand and three. And we are not here to deny a project that follows the general plan, that follows the zoning, that does everything it's supposed to do. We are here to make sure that the quality of life and the quality of product for Brentwood is as good as we can possibly make it. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you for making the changes that you did. I think it looks good.
Oh, sorry, I'm going to pick it back on yours. The duets, thank you, those are for affordable housing, so thank you so much for making those nice for the people who are going to get them. That's something our council is very, very proud of. Thank you.
And this, this is to staff. One of the callers earlier, and I missed my opportunity, I missed my note before we voted. So I'm just going to ask regarding the solar tile, is, what would be a good opportunity to add? And I'm trying to be very careful so I don't outstep the boundaries of this particular And I'll stop, I'll stop there and ask offline. How we do, how about that? Yes, and we'll deal with that. So at this time, if there's no further comments, I will take two motions on this item.
As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution adopting the vesting tentative map for subdivision nine, six, one, zero.
And I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Second motion?
As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution approving design review number twenty-two dash zero, zero, six for True Mark Trailside.
And I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
May I ask for clarification? Thank you. Margaret, can you share my screen for a moment, please? Is it? Oh, bigger. So the resolution as written currently includes this condition. It seems that you want to remove the language that has been struck through, which still looks extremely small. I don't know why it's not getting any bigger on the screen, Margaret. Oh, there we go. You wish to remove this language, if that's correct, and instead require the applicant to adopt the changes that were shown on their slideshow this evening. Is that correct? Is that what the motion is?
Yes, it is. And I think they adopted most of the things here, correct?
I just want to make sure we're taking out extraneous language and actually capturing what the council is intending, and is what, is that what the secondor of the motion intended?
So I will second that.
Would you like me to restate it? Being here, or you got it?
Alexis?
I'm sorry. And if I could clarify, because staff has not seen those elevations other on, other than this slide, I might suggest leaving the letter C for roof tile in the condition because I can't verify that what they showed tonight actually showed that tile.
So I'd be comfortable just to restate my motion.
That would be helpful.
Thank you. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution approving design review number two-two-zero, dash zero, zero, six for True Mark Trailside to include the changes to the plan elevation three as reflected in the presentation tonight, and approving the enhanced, the rear elevation of the duets as shown tonight. And also, all proposed roof materials shall be tiled for each plan. Yes, and it's not going to design review because everything is, has been presented tonight.
All right. So if, if you would be amenable to that, staff can work on the language to exactly capture that, and we will make that change before the mayor signs the resolution. Is that acceptable to you?
That is acceptable. Thank you.
And the secondor?
Yeah, my second stance.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item moves. Thank you. This time, we'll move into item F three. This is a request for a continuance to September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three of the consideration of ordinances enacting a permanent ban on all oil and gas development operations in the city and more stringent regulatory control measures for existing oil and gas development in the city. And Alexis Morris will present.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Staff is requesting a continuance of this September twelfth due to a very recent, in fact, published on the day the council packet was published, court case that could be consequential for the city's effort in this matter. So in order to allow our city attorney's office and our outside counsel to digest and process what the implications of that court case are, we would recommend this be continued till September twelfth.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions of staff regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. If there are no further questions from council, I will now open the public comments on the continuance. If you have comments about the substance of the ordinances, please save those for the continued meeting. I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
This is the time to comment on this agenda item. We did receive one comment that was related to the substance of the ordinances, and that will be added to the continuance. If you're in person, please file a speaker card on the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom and plan on speaking, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have one speaker card. Ian?
Good evening, council. It's been a while since we last talked about this item. So as a representative of Sunflower Alliance and No Drilling in Contra Costa County, the youth group behind this, and it's a pariah, the proponents of this project, we are in support of a continuance to allow city staff the time and council the time to really read through this lawsuit and read the decision that was posted by the state Supreme Court case. This came a lot sooner than we expected. We were not expecting this for another month, so we scrambled a little bit at our own time to read through everything. I do recommend that council and to the general public to read the blog post on our website, sunflower-alliance.org, and read the, under the announcements, the article named CA Supreme Court ruling on Chevron v. Monterey County, where it talks about the measure C, state Supreme Court case decision. Basically, I'm not here to give legal advice, that's city staff, but basically you guys will have the right to continue regulating oil and gas drilling through city zoning. Basically, the decision said the state has no authority, but you, the city still have authority. So it seems like we can still continue full speed ahead, and we will be there at the continuance meeting. And I am in full support of the continuance as staff recommended to allow everyone to have the time to digest and be ready. If council chooses to continue tonight, I'll be here, but my team's not here to, you know, rally in the support. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards, and there's no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments, move into council discussion regarding, regarding this item. Any further discussion regarding this item? Then do I have a motion regarding this item?
As detailed in the staff report, I make a motion to continue the consideration of the item to September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The item moves. Moving into business items, item G one. Next item is the draft housing element status update. And Jennifer Hagan, you are busy tonight, and she will report.
Thank you again, Mayor, and members of the city council. Wait to share my screen.
As we get that taken care of, the purpose of this agenda item tonight is to provide the city council an update on the comments that the California Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD, provided on the city's second draft housing element update in order to gain authorization on three recommended policy changes that we will discuss with you tonight. There we go. As background, the city formally initiated the six-cycle housing element update in October of two thousand and twenty-one, with substantive public meetings beginning in April of two thousand and twenty-two. In October of two thousand and twenty-two, the city submitted our initial first draft to HCD, in which we received comments back in January. We then followed up with a second draft submitted in March, and on May sixteenth, HCD provided a second letter to city staff with comments. It is this latest comment letter that we will be discussing with you tonight. Overall, the letter included twenty-five comments compared to the original sixty-one comments in the first letter, and they're categorized based on various topics and sections of the draft housing element. Staff categorized these comments into two categories, minor and major. With minor comments, those that did not require new policies or programs and can be addressed through additional requested documentation and minor revisions or clarifications. And major comments are those that will require new or substantial revised programs. Overall, twenty-two of the comments were classified as minor, while the remaining three comments were classified as major. Minor comments primarily affected portions of the section two, community profile, and section three, housing constraints, resources, and fair housing, also known as our AFFH section. Staff is still working on these revisions, which typically include providing additional background information or clarification to HCD. The three remaining areas that will require new programs include the following areas. The first is to remove discretion related to the city's midpoint policy. Next is to reduce parking for smaller bedroom type units and multifamily developments. The third is to evaluate our findings and criteria for design review applications. The first to be discussed tonight is our general plan midpoint policy, which states that developments cannot exceed the midpoint of a density range without additional discretionary approval of the city council. HCD has stated that it considers our current midpoint policy a constraint because it requires additional discretion for projects that are within the allowable density range of the general plan. HCD advised staff that the city's midpoint policy must be removed in order for the housing element to be certified by HCD. Based on this, staff has drafted the following program to eliminate the midpoint policy from the general plan. Based on new legislation, specifically S B three thirty, the city has been unable to enforce, enforce subjective criteria as outlined in the current policy. Since the city's midpoint policy cannot be objectively applied to new residential projects, eliminating the policy would not have a substantial impact on processing of housing applications. The largest, the largest impact would be procedural in nature by not requiring city council review and having projects approved at the planning commission level. However, the city council would continue to retain the ability to call for review all lower-level approvals. This would not approvals. This would not increase the allowable density, and all projects would continue to be required to remain within the current allowable density range unless other provisions, such as the state density bonus law, are applied for. The next item is the potential change related to HCD's comment requiring units with smaller bedroom types, such as studio and one-bedroom units, to provide or that our current code requires to provide two parking spaces. HCD considers it a constraint that the city must include a program committing to reduce parking requirements for units with fewer bedrooms. Based on this, staff has drafted the following program to amend its parking standard for multifamily developments, requiring 1.5 parking spaces for one-bedroom units and one parking space for studio units instead of two that are currently required. As proposed, the new policy would reduce the minimum amount of parking required for smaller units throughout the city. However, these standards would continue to be a minimum requirement and would not preclude a developer from providing additional parking if their market analysis showed a need for it. Although this does have a potential to reduce overall parking, the overall number of parking for parking stalls for new development, staff does not believe that this will be that this will greatly influence development trends within the city, considering that the state density bonus law, as well as the city's current municipal code, already allow for requests for reduced parking, and no request have been received or processed for recent developments. The last section to be discussed is related to approval findings for decision-making criteria for design and site development review, also known as our design review applications. HCD has identified the city's current findings as a potential constraint that would need to be modified to be objective in nature. Based on this, staff has has drafted the following program. Based on new legislation, again SB 330, the city has already identified this as an area that would need to be modified as part of our zoning code update, since the city is unable to enforce the criteria, such as those currently outlined, that require the creation of well-composed urban design, as well as harmonious related harmoniously related to other facilities. Although this had already been presented to the city council as a potential change as part of our code update, staff is including it tonight to confirm that it will be required to be part of the zoning code update. Staff continues to encourage the council to diligently move forward with the recommended changes in order to gain HCD certification. As staff has stated over the past few months, without HCD certification, the city may be considered out of compliance with state law, in which the following consequences may apply, including additional building remedy builders' remedy applications, being ineligible for various funds, HCD enforcement actions, and lawsuits from third parties. Based on this, staff is requesting authorization to move forward with the three policy changes as recommended and discussed tonight. These changes will then be incorporated into revised housing element to be submitted to HCD. After HCD certification, the housing element would then need to be re-adopted by the city council. And with that, that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Jennifer. Are there any clarifying questions of staff regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. We will open public comments. Margaret?
This is the time to comment on this agenda item. No comments received via email prior to the meeting. If you're in person, please file a speaker card on the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom and plan on speaking, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I have no speaker cards in person, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
At this time, we will close public comments, move into council discussion. Councilmember Mendoza?
I know we have to do it. Anyone who's upset about taking away parking, because it's one of the issues that we have in the city, or increased density, because now they're making us get rid of our midpoint, you can reach out to your assemblymen, your senators, your state representatives, your governor, because they're the ones making us do it. It's not something we want to do. I do want this to be the last time we submit. I think we need to do what Hayward did. If they're going to keep... This is a process of numbers. We have met our numbers. So the public should know that. We have met our arena number. We are not short on what we have to deliver when it comes to what they say our needs are in California and our responsibility is as a city. So what Hayward did is basically, if you keep yanking our chain, we're going to sue you. And I think at some point, cities need to start standing up like Hayward did. And if they're going to, because there is they don't have standards, we all have to have standards for our design, for our zoning, for everything. And there is not a checklist that they have to have when they review our housing element. They can do whatever they want, and you can have to. We have reviewed different cities that are different cities will be similar, and they will approve one and not the other. And and if HCD is listening, we met our number. We did the number that you wanted. We are providing the housing. We are fighting for affordable housing. You can see it on this council all the time, and it's disappointing that the people who are working the hardest to make sure that we're providing the housing are the ones that are being punished the most. So that's all I got to say about it.
I speak.
What she said. No, just kidding. I would have to agree with a lot of that, because I I read through this and was so very frustrated. I know staff has worked really hard on this, and I know that we've done everything we were supposed to do. We submitted a very strong first attempt. The parking specifically made me angry, because if we're talking about one-bedroom or studio units, we're often talking about people who are lower income. And being lower income does not mean that you only have one car. Oftentimes, it means you have more. You can't take transportation if you've got tools you need to do to your job. If one of you has to take the kids to school and the other one has to go to the job, it it's very frustrating to see that that as much as we're trying to push for affordable housing, and they say they are, they're pushing against what is going to make affordable housing work for our residents here in Brentwood. Incredibly frustrating. The other thing that was very upsetting to me was the whole the part about the in-Lufy's, and I'm looking at what my notes were, because it made it sound like if they were going to actually, because we're not we're not taking Lufy's anymore. We decided that we were going to push for a higher percentage of inclusionary housing. And so for them to now say for us to look at in-Lufy's as something that's almost optional, and and if a developer decides to come in and do that, we need to give them incentive to do it. I just, it's hard to read this and not get really frustrated and and try to question what the state is doing, really, to help affordable housing, especially when the cities are trying that on their own. So I too agree, we have to do this. We don't have a choice. It gets more and more frustrating every time, because I feel like they are just trying to pick at whatever they can possibly find that doesn't quite fit. And we're doing our best here, and and we are the ones making a difference here with affordable housing. They are not. So as frustrated as I am, agree, we need to do this. Just had to make a statement.
Any further discussion? Frankly, I don't trust myself to say more than's already been said.
Well, and the other thing is, if you want to fight it, you can go to ourneighborhoodvoices.com, because the only thing that's going to stop it is the constitutional amendment, which makes you the people, the voice on land use and zoning, and not the people in Sacramento in their ivory tower.
Thank you. With that, do I have a motion?
As detailed in the staff report, a move to provide the following direction on proposed revisions to be incorporated into the third draft housing element update. And where do we have those? Because I know I can just read them, right?
I believe you can just say as discussed in the
Okay, so as discussed in the staff presentation. Correct.
We have a first?
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Moving into item G two. Our next item is a report regarding the joint use of city and Brentwood Union Liberty School Facilities. And Tian will present? Or someone will will present. That.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Mayor, good evening, City Council. Tian Nguyen, Recreation Manager. As mentioned tonight, we have a report regarding City of Brentwood Joint Use Facility Agreements with Brentwood Union School District and Liberty Union High School District. So a little bit of outline, or excuse me, an outline for our presentation tonight. We wanted to provide a little bit of history of the city and school districts on their joint use agreements in the past, provide some distinctions between the two school district agreements that were attached to the staff report. Excuse me, provide some context for city council as far as what the usage has looked like in 2021, 2022, and provide some considerations for council's discussions tonight. So a little bit of history I wanted to provide is this item was requested as a future item request from Councilmember Mendoza. We'll talk about a couple of distinctions between the two school district agreements, but I did want to kind of use this point here. There's a lot of abbreviations in the staff report, as well as in the slideshow. So for BUSD, that is going to be Brentwood Union School District, LUHSD, Lincoln, excuse me, Liberty Union High School, Liberty Union High School District. So I did want to clarify that before we got started. So some background, as mentioned in the staff report, there's a good amount of history. We have a really good relationship, the city and our school districts, 30-plus years of agreements. That originally started with the city working individually with schools on different joint use agreements that I think dated back to 1993. That's evolved over time to kind of where we are today, where we have one agreement for each of the school districts that involves multiple schools and multiple facilities. Also mentioned in the staff report is some history as far as some contributions the city has provided, and those included contributions for design, development, construction of various facilities throughout the history of the agreements. To kind of distinguish the agreements, again, attached to the staff report, the Brentwood Union School District Agreement, the agreement that we're currently working off is from 2008 with an amendment from 2012. Unique to that agreement is there is a agreement for annual maintenance that the city shares with that school district. Different from the Liberty Union High School District Agreement, again, that is a separate agreement. That's back from 2011. That agreement has four amendments with that agreement, with the most recent coming from 2022. The majority of those agreements did happen in the 2020s in response to different facility changes and facilities listed in the joint use agreements, as well as, I believe, one that was specific to COVID use. But the most recent one that was updated was from 2022. Mentioned in the staff report is a separate, it's not a joint use agreements, but it's an agreement the city has with Liberty Adult Education. I wanted to call that one out. It's not a joint use agreement, but it is an agreement that we have with Liberty Adult Ed to provide programs at city facilities. That's a partnership that we have, and Liberty Adult Ed provides really, really good programs, such as stress management, ballroom dancing, adult 50-plus exercise classes. Those are at city facilities, but again, those aren't joint use. It's a separate agreement, even though they use city facilities. The hours that they use city facilities for those programs aren't counted in the joint use numbers that we'll be sharing tonight. So some data for some context. So these numbers were pulled from the fiscal year 2021, 2022. At the time of the report, I was unable to provide the most recent fiscal year 22, 23 data, but again, wanted to provide some context for council's discussion tonight. What you're seeing in front of you is city use of the school district facilities by hours of facility use. On the left-hand side, Brentwood Union School District, showing the numbers of hours we use for the gyms with Brentwood Union. This is going to be a lot of our programs that are related to our Tiny Todd Sports Program, our Junior Warriors Programs. In the past, we have used other facilities as well, whether that was theaters, fields, or multipurpose rooms. And we've also used other schools as well, not listed here in the past, including Garen Elementary and Adams Middle School. On the right-hand side, you're seeing city usage of Liberty Union High School District Facilities. Again, this is from 2021, 2022. Unique to this agreement is the use of Heritage High School Pool. That's, for the most part, for these numbers, use of these facilities by local swim teams, where the city is obviously using the school district's facility, but we are scheduling and staffing those hourly usage, and that's what you're seeing here in front of you. I did want to mention that those facilities are being used, again, by those local swim clubs, whether that's swim clubs or the La Miranda Brentwood Water Polo Team. So again, local usage of these facilities. This slide is going to show you school district use of city facilities. In front of you, you're looking at Liberty Union High School District's use of facilities, again, from 2021, 2022. These numbers break down to Liberty High's rugby team using the park, the Liberty Dance Team also using the park, various banquet banquet testing meetings of Liberty Union using city facilities. At the time of the staff report, I didn't have a lot of usage from Brentwood Union of city facilities. Again, this is from 2021, 2022, but we do have a history of them using some of our city facilities in the past. So some considerations for council tonight. I do want to start off again that, you know, we've had a long and strong and really good relationship with our school districts, and that's something we look forward to continuing. But as mentioned in the staff report, you know, a good amount of these agreements were drafted a while ago, and some of them haven't been amended for a while. So it's a prime opportunity for us to look at updating the list of facilities for use. One of the big things called out within the staff report is, you know, at the time of drafting of these agreements, the city did have bleachers and stages that were available for the school districts to use. That's no longer true. So that's something that we can, of course, update in amendment for these agreements. Something also to consider that's mentioned in the staff report is that we talked about dates, hours, and priority use of the facilities, and that's going to be on both sides. For the most part, our school districts, they use their facilities for schools, of course, and then after-school programs, sports, and those type of things. And then, of course, the city has priority use after that. So again, with the relationship that we have with our school districts, I think that's always an available conversation that we can have if we do look for amendments for these agreements that are most both mutually beneficial for both parties, again, maximizing the uses of the facilities. One of the unique points that I wanted to call out and and ask council for some considerations and during the discussion is staffing costs, janitorial costs, and utility costs. This is a big topic that we have. I think it's no surprise that as we use more of these facilities, that the parties that are hosting those uses, they incur more costs, whether that's asking staff to work in the evenings, work overtimes, work weekends. For us example, we provide more staff at the pool if it's requested more. Again, janitorial and utility costs, those are rising costs. The more you use it, the more costs you occur, as well as those just growing over time, especially as we see inflation the last couple of years. The language within the agreements do call out that there's opportunities for each party to bill the other, but we can look at amending that, again, trying to find a mutual mutual understanding between the school districts and the city to provide better language on how those will be charged or considered on a case-by-case basis. As always, as we look at programming and opportunities, staff capacity expanding program is something for considerations. And again, that's going to be on both the city's sides and the school district's side. As we mentioned, you know, additional usage requires additional resources, whether that's asking staff to stay later to open and close facilities, asking them to work on different programming. That's a consideration for us to consider, as well as for the school districts as well. You know, the staff that they're asking to be available for our later evening usage or on the weekends, that's staff that they have in place. So they're typically picking up extra hours, picking up overtime, and and those things, because they're operating out of outside of their regular use hours. So that's just a consideration that we have, again, when we talk with the school districts on usage. And then goals, as mentioned in the staff report, whether the school district facilities or the city facilities are being used or available, typically the usage is going to be from Brentwood residents. So if that's after-school program with the students there, typically Brentwood youth and teens. If a facility is not available, again, on the school district shot on the school district side or the city side, more often than not, that's because of a city program or because of a rental from a local resident. So I'm just trying to understand that, or excuse me, just trying to communicate that, you know, usage of the facility is really good, and then if it's not available, that usually is because that's being used by a local Brentwood resident. That concludes my staff report. I'm available for questions.
Are there any clarifying questions at this time of staff? Seeing no clarifying questions, at this time, we'll open public comments. Margaret?
I received no public comments on this item prior to the meeting. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I have no... I do have one speaker. Greg, go ahead.
It's interesting. We've noticed this before. We don't know what to comment on yet, because we don't know what the item is. So what what's there to comment on until you have your discussion? So thought for process that maybe we could have some public comment after the discussion, because we'll know more of what's happening. That's all.
I have no additional speaker cards, and there's no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments. Enter into council discussion.
Yeah, so when I brought this forward, it was during our town halls for the sports complex. And we got a lot of questions about why can't we use the tennis courts? Why can't we use the basketball courts? And I think those are the two that I heard the most about people want to use, tennis courts and basketball courts. So when it came for, I think people were like, someone said they were fixing a lock. I don't know exactly what was going on with the tennis courts, but it was just, how do, is there a way that we can have facilities for more tennis? And then the other thing is the basketball. People want to know, can they use the basketball courts for anything? Because it gets hot out here and we don't have indoor. And I mean, it came up even at National Night Out, and I'm like, we don't have money to build any more, you know, facilities right now. But if there's a way to leverage what we have, that would be great if it's possible to do so.
I think I echoed in this request when Councilmember Mendoza brought it, but I think we talked about this a little earlier too, when we talked about having spaces for our youth since we don't have a youth center. And it also came up when the Getty's Theater came up, like, what are our, what will be the availability of residents who are not going through the school district to use it? And that was something that we heard we would get back in the report out about, you know, possibly having the, I think the one thing was the time availability and how that process works so people know how to use the process. I have to say that I appreciate the report. It does become a little bit frustrating to hear about every single time when we come for Parks and Rec. I get frustrated when we ask for expanded programming to hear about we have to always take in consideration staff capacity and the cost of everything. I know that's something we have to take in consideration, but I think when we get these report out, I think it would be really great to find out, hey, when it's time to do our budget, we need this amount of staff to increase to be able to do what the council wants. I think several times we've brought up, hey, let's get some more adaptive programming. We want to be able to eventually have some type of, in the interim, until we can have our own facility, something for our youth. There's just, I mean, day one, I came on there saying, there's not enough activities for our youth, even though there's a crap ton that Parks and Rec does, and I'm so appreciative. It's still not enough, especially for our older youth and our older adult population, our senior population. But I just think when it's time to budget, or we talk about budgets or what departments need, this would be a great time to say, we haven't had enough capacity. We need to increase it and come before us so that when we come back, now we have the capacity to do what we're asking to do. That being said, I think it would be great for us to have an updated list of the facilities. I appreciate that recommendation, and I think that that would, I would tonight be suggesting that we have that. Then we'll know how many, like tennis courts, or we'll know if the theater is available, or what's not, what is or what is not available. I think it'll be even great for our separate committees to know. I know just sitting in the PAL was like, oh, we need this area. When I went to a PAL committee meeting, and it was like, oh, well, it would be nice to say, hey, we have this list right here that we can provide or go to. So and for the other, other youth commissions and all the other commissions. So I would, I would say that the time availability, the process, having a detail, like, what's the process for that? If someone does want to use it, and then an updated list of the facilities would be great. And I don't know if this is on the same thing, but if we are having a difficult time with capacity, I think it's time for us to have a discussion about what we need to do to increase the size of staffing and cost, the budget, because that keeps coming up every time.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. This, this did come about as part of the discussion that we're hearing about with not having enough resources for our kids, and basketball indoors does come up, and tennis does come up. And I would agree that I have to say that in reading the staff report, I didn't see a lot of, here's what you're going to be discussing. And I think I would agree with Councilmember Pearson in that I'd like to see the listing of what we do have available. It has been a bit frustrating, you know, for a lot of people who are looking for things for their, their kids, older adults with disabilities, younger adults with disabilities. That we talked about adaptive programming again and all the rest of that. But I think this, this particular staff report could have used a little bit more about, here's what we're talking about, here's what you're voting on. But I agree that this is, it is an important discussion for us to have now. I wish we could hear from Superintendent Volta, frankly, but to hear about his, his feelings about this capacity on their end.
Question about the budget. I thought, we charge back for what it costs to have activities, right? That's why we have that fee schedule. So shouldn't they be paying for them, like, if we start an indoor basketball program, wouldn't we charge them what it costs to run the program?
If I, if I understand your question correctly, Councilmember Mendoza, so we do have cost recovery goals for our programs. I, I want to say for our youth, we do have different cost recovery goals. They're not full 100% cost recovery. There is, I'm going to use the word subsidy, if you will, for those programs. So there are, there are leaders there, but it's not fully, it's not like we spend X amount of dollars and we get that all back from registration. There are subsidies that come with those cost recovery goals.
So when we come back with the list that Councilmember Pearson is talking about and Vice Mayor Meyer, can we get, like, what is it per hour that we would have to spend? Like, do you want it open five hours, six hours? Like, what does that look like money-wise? I think that would be helpful, like, the list of locations plus what it would cost. And then, so when it comes to headcount, we approved a lot of headcount a couple of years ago in our budget, like, a lot. Did we, did that, and I'm sorry, I don't remember all of the details. Did that include Park and Rec headcount, Bruce, when we did that, that one time during our budget? I think it was a year and a half ago?
Yes, I believe so. There was some discussion about park and recreation.
Did you get headcount by any chance?
We, way back the last time strategic planning happened a few years ago, I think we added like another recreation coordinator. We also added another park maintenance worker. But we haven't had a lot of additional recreation staffing for additional programming. So when we talk about staff capacity and cost, there's also direct cost. And even if we have joint use of the school districts, we do need to think about the direct cost of the use of the school district as well to cover janitorial and utilities and things like that as well. So there is some cost there. But we try to do cost recovery as accurate as we can to recover the cost in the fee structure. But we also have to make sure our fees are marketable and affordable as well. So all of those things have to be looked at when we put our costs together.
Okay, and I know you guys are stretched thin, especially with the, with the sports complex. I know that is adding a lot. You guys are doing a lot. Do you see your workload as that starts, you know, once we get that done to start taper off and there be more opportunity? Or do you feel that there would be a continued need for headcount? If we were to do, right?
When we, well, for example, Sand Creek Park, we're adding another large sports complex, and there will be operational costs with that as well. So, you know, that stretches our existing staff because they, they will need to do more. So we will have to take a close look at our staffing capacity with bringing out additional operations as well.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things I, I did want to bring up, and several of my questions and concerns have already been covered. But we have a significant portion of our community that are constantly asking about court uses, basketball, pickleball, badminton, I think I said that properly. And, and some of these, the demographic for the use that I'm being requested is, is not youth specifically. And I would like to see potentially an opportunity to maybe adapt the usage cost, the recovery cost to, to the group. If it's an adult group that, that does have the ability to, and the willingness to pay for a use of a facility instead of having to leave town and go to other communities to have access to those facilities. I think having the information available as to what, what that might look like that other communities are doing as cost recovery. So perhaps we don't have to try to reinvent the wheel because it would be the same demographics that are doing the same activities in the different communities. But that would be helpful as well. Councilmember Orlemans?
Along with the, the lists that everybody has talked about of what facilities would be available for us to use, Councilmember Pearson hit on it just briefly, but I think we really need to take a close look at what the process is for us to get to those facilities. What do we have to do? Are we going to have to provide along with the use agreement? What else is going to be needed? How long do they need in advance notice? So somebody says, hey, we're thinking about, I don't know, the gym at Liberty High School. We can kind of guide them along the way of, this usually takes a few weeks. It's going to only be available during these times. This is the process that has to take place so that that can be done.
Just to comment on that, we do meet with the school districts on an annual basis, and we look at our scheduling as we plan out annually. It is a challenge to be able to get use of gymnasiums especially. I know we do have Superintendent Volta here. I'm wondering if he might be able to comment, come up and comment just on, from a school district's point of view, the amount of use in these gymnasiums and how challenging it is to be able to schedule open times because the school districts also have expanded use of those gymnasiums as well. So it is challenging. It's not like they're sitting empty or dormant, and there's time for us to use them. So we do work well together. We try to plan as much as we can in advance. But I'm wondering if Superintendent Volta, if he wouldn't mind, if he could comment from the school district's point of view on this as well.
Just a couple of thoughts as I heard you talking. I can't believe some agreeing with Greg. I wasn't going to comment until I heard what you had to say. Doesn't happen often. Mark this date down, please, Margaret. One of the things that is a challenge, when these MOUs were written and thought of, and when they were last updated around 2012, we had 7,300 students in our district. Now we have 8,300 students. And when you look at 2005, you're talking about 5,000 students. So it's real easy to make plans for space with such a smaller school population. I think the challenge in listening to you talk is primetime use. Everybody wants a place for our students directly after school, whether it's our coaches, middle school, PAL. And there just isn't enough space for that primetime right after school when we need it the most for our students. So I think that's why this conversation continues about teen centers, youth centers, and things of that nature. Unfortunately, as our schools grow, some of our teams can get larger, but a lot of them have to stay about the same size, even though there are more students. So it, it's difficult to limit, to accommodate all students directly after school and during our practice time. As far as the use of high school facilities, we do follow the Civic Center Act. We do not turn anyway, anybody away if it is not being used by one of our programs. And lastly, we just updated our facility request platform. In the past, you would call up our receptionist and ask if something is available at a certain time. Soon residents will be able to see, groups will be able to see that online. And so we have updated that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Perfect.
I, I wanted to not ask a question, but add something. You know, I think it's like a kind of piggybacking on kind of what Greg was talking about, this, the chicken versus the egg kind of situation. I, I think there are three things that keep coming up in all of our conversations. One is, I think if we had the availability in advance, then we could better tell you all what we want as far as we can create programming. Like, it's not our job to create program, but we can kind of give more details on the type of program that we'd like to see because we know, okay, in the summertime, we'd love to see this because the schools are not going to have a tennis, the tennis courts are not going to be utilized, or the basketball courts will be not utilized in the winter. So maybe we can have clinics ran for our youth and create some type of youth program without a youth facility, right? If we had the update of the list of facilities, again, we can tell where we'd like to have our programming done or what specifics, because I feel like what we have right now is constant dialogue without action. And there's a constant dialogue about a youth center that feels like it's never going to happen. And it's not the responsibility of Parks and Rec to make us have a youth center. But I think if we can work creatively together to get all of the information in advance, and quite frankly, if we know what the bandwidth is of Parks and Rec, we'll know how far we can stretch you. And we can say, this is just not in the bandwidth to do it right now. But here's where, if they get more staffing in a year from now or two years from now, we can have these type of programming for our youth that's not just specifically in our summer pamphlets, but we can do this and provide other resources to people in our city. So I, I think if we had availability, process of how to get access, update of the facilities, and quite frankly, just where we are as far as, I mean, I think there was a presentation about the events that, that you all do each year. But like, quite frankly, where is the bandwidth, or is there any room for squeeze to do anything else? Or you won't be available until this date or that date? Another sports complex came up. After that, we'll be able to do more details on something else, a new project. But something more like that would help us a little bit more move this from dialogue to action. Because I feel like even what we're telling you now, it still doesn't get us to action. It just gives us, we're not giving you enough information on what we like besides, can you give us a list? Can you give us this? And then we're back again for another conversation, and it's just a lot of talk, and talk is cheap.
One of the things that Superintendent Volta brought to my attention, and I, and I appreciate the updated information that the school district's going to have on availability of, of those resources. A lot of the conversations I'm getting lately are specifically not about the students and the primetime, but potentially later in the afternoons or evenings, on the weekends, or early mornings on, you know, Saturday, Sunday, where they might have access to that. Perhaps something we might look at as a city for our website is to have a location on our city website where they can go and click on a link to the school district's available resources as well, just, just as a convenient option so that if they're looking for what's available in the city, we can have a location on the city website that says, follow this link for the school district's availability for those. I don't know how viable that is, but if we could look into that, that might, that would alleviate two, two concerns. One, our, for example, pickleball, if they have a pickleball league, we don't have to tie up our, our city staff with that. If they are just looking for a location and an opportunity to schedule that, they can just deal directly with, with that facility. And both, both the facility is then being used, and our staff is still free to do things that are a city function.
Can I mention, I, I think, Mayor, that that's a very good idea. When we were, again, talking about the youth center and trying to make some things happen back year or two, whatever that was, at the time, we requested and received a specific page on the website that was dedicated to youth services. And what the mayor is talking about would be a perfect addition to that page. I'd like to see, because I think that, we haven't, we haven't promoted that in a while from what I've seen. I'd like to see that being included in the newsletter or some social, social posts, maybe to remind people that that's there. And I assume that's being updated as we receive more resources, nonprofits, activities that youth can take part in. I think this would be a good home for what the mayor is talking about.
I think what we keep hearing is we want to engage our youth more, and we want to find places for them to do stuff because we hear about the kids running the street all the time. I mean, it's what we hear about all the, I'm sure you hear about the school district, we hear about it at the city. So I guess my, my challenge to Tim is, what are we going to do about it, right? Like, you've been with other cities. What have you seen? What are we going to do? Because we've been, you know, like Councilwoman Pearson said, we've been talking about this for a long time. And soccer complex is happening, but there's still a big need in our city, right? We keep building, we keep bringing in families, and we are a family town. So my challenge to you and my request would be... So my challenge to you and my request would be, is based on what you've seen in other cities, how do we make this happen, right? Like seeing best practices? How do we take these facilities and do something that's really going to make a difference?
Okay, if there's no further comment regarding this item, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I've been keeping notes. I'll try to keep the motion. I saw the mic. I almost got pulled by our city attorney and you turned that corner to go back to facilities. So I'll try to make sure that the motion is, yeah. As detailed in the staff report, I move for the following, that our Parks and Rec update the facilities list for available facilities that we can have joint use with for the Brentwood Union School District and the Liberty Union High School District. Yes, and also adding the fees associated with the usage of said facilities. Also, to in advance, provide us possibly as early as possible in the beginning of the year, the availability, which would include times and dates of those facilities. The process in how we get access to them or residents can get access to said facilities. To also, in our youth services page and in our newsletter, provide a link and updates to district, school district resources. And the last thing that I heard was that in some form of the city to develop an action plan in which we can engage our youth by utilizing said joint use facilities.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. And Mr. Volta, thank you for your time. This time we'll move into item H1, requests for future agenda items.
I have been hearing about the dog at the Brentwood Golf Course quite a bit. Understanding that the county animal services is the enforcement arm and the ones that are going to come out and take a look at whether that dog is being abused or not doesn't change the fact that there might be some things we can explore as a city. And so I've actually asked Tim, Tim has reached out to the county. Brentwood is, has the hottest temperatures in the county. And so I think while some of the ordinances that the county has in place for animal protection across the county are fine for all of the cities, our city gets much hotter. And so I think I would like to look at whether we can do something around making sure that there's shade, making sure that there's access to water, making sure that the resting place for a dog is not on asphalt or cement. Whether we can look at on days that are over 100 degrees, minimizing the amount of time a dog is left outside. I just want to, I want to explore that and see what we can do if there, if anything, as a city in conjunction potentially with animal services at a county level. Is that clear enough?
Yes, that's clear. We can proceed with that. I did get a response back from them with a lot of details about the specific case. And they are emphatic that there are no violations and there's a whole lot of details that the public doesn't seem to have. They did share that the ordinances that they follow and enforce are all standardized throughout the whole county and would have some concerns if we make too many changes and their difficulty in enforcing those. But we can certainly explore that and come back with some analysis for you.
Thank you. I think the heat in looking at and trying to do some local enforcement, I realize that's a challenge. Sometimes it's just the statement of an ordinance that makes people be a little bit more respectful of that kind of thing. So if we could just explore it, I don't know if it's going to go anywhere or not, but I do feel like there are a lot of people very upset about this and I want them to feel heard and I want us to be a dog-friendly city despite the heat. Thank you.
It's Mayor Mendoza.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about liquor licenses. There seems to be, like, the state has their rules. I don't know if we have anything, but we need to find, we need our own city guidelines. And if they mirror the state, that's fine. But, you know, we need to also define a school because we did have that issue. There, I think Kitty Academy is a school. They have first graders, kindergartners, there's children there. Staff did not feel that there was a school. So I think we need a steadfast definition on what a school is. So right now I think it's 600 feet from a school or a park or whatever, and then 100 feet from a residence. So I would like it to be clear that our city also will mirror those. And it's not that we're looking at the state anymore, it's that these are our ordinances. So I want to explore that possibility and also defining the school. I want, I'm still really confused about, and I know I've gone back and forth with Alexis on this, on the smoke shop ban. We implemented a smoke shop ban and right after that, you know, we had that smoke shop open up on Brentwood Boulevard. I'm still confused about that. So I think that we need to discuss it because I still get a lot of complaints from residents about that smoke shop. So I think it needs to just be discussed because is it meeting the guidelines? Is it not? Do we need to update our smoke shop ordinance? Is it not strong enough for our residents? Because people are like, there's kids, they're all, it's right next door to the donut shop and kids are exposed to all of these products day in and day out. So we got to figure this out. So those would be my two asks.
I'm glad everyone is sitting down because I also have a future agenda item request. And this is the result of a request from one of our residents during National Night Out who is, lives adjacent to the former property that was, is now the closed golf course in Deer Ridge regarding the the use of sheep. I believe it was the property owner of that piece of property. I understand private property rights and all that. But I'd like for us to look into an ordinance that provides more protection for residents for grazing animals. You know, we, city council received a letter and city received a letter of some of the damage that was done to the property. I understand that there's been some private interaction between those parties. But as a city, I'd like to see if we can look into having an ordinance that prevents or protects as much as possible our residents from circumstances like that in general. That would be helpful.
And by protection, meaning security guards or aiding structures?
Thank you for the clarification request. So having been raised on a ranch and in a farming community, we would use cattle often to do very similar things. And we could create an enclosure of whatever size we wanted to, that was a moving enclosure so that it could do the work necessary, but it limited the animals, whether they were sheep, goat or cattle or horses from going outside of that area. And that way, you know, it'd provide more protection, both for the animal as well as for any residents to prevent them from unintended property damage or loss. Are there any other future agenda item requests? Being none, we will move into item H2.1. Councilmember Pearson, would you like to explain your request?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I requested that the council consider making a resolution supporting the exoneration of the Port Chicago 50. In 1944, 50 black sailors were convicted of mutiny in declining to return to work after an explosion at the Port Chicago Naval Magazine near present-day Concord, California. After the tragic explosion occurred on July 17, 1944, killing 320 soldiers, sailors and injuring more, only black sailors were ordered to continue to load munitions in a very unsafe and shaky environment. Caucasian sailors were not forced to return. The 50 sailors who refused to return out of fear for their safety and in dealing with their own traumas were court martialed and tried and convicted of mutiny. Their families suffered, not, suffered in many ways, even today their families are still suffering. I had the opportunity to meet with them. Our Navy, our U.S. Navy and our national park system is creating a space at the naval facility that's off Port Chicago for a historical site that's going to be there. And in meeting with some of the families, I heard some of the most outrageous things that occurred. One of them, after these 50 people were represented by Thurgood Marshall and they lost in the court martial, they were revoked of their government benefits, their veteran benefits. They were not able to get the same GI Beals later on. They were completely stripped of it because they were court martialed. And their families had to live in shame of their convictions. So a group of attorneys are working together under the Contra Costa County Bar Association, association with the families and other groups to exonerate. On, I believe it was July the 15th, 2023, Vice President Kamala Harris signed on to an agreement. And recently, the city of Concord, the city of Albany, the city of Warner Creek, the city of Orinda, the city of Martinez and Pittsburgh have all signed resolutions seeking out a letter from the city to support, to send to the state and federal government to exonerate the Port Chicago 50. And I think it's time that these people get their exoneration. I would ask that as a city, we also send a letter in support of the exoneration of the Port Chicago 50. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open public comments.
This is the time to comment on this agenda item. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're in Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person. And your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired and no emails were received on this prior to the meeting. I have no speaker cards and there are no hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments, move, open council discussion. I'm not sure who was.
No, I just say I support this 100%. I mean, if you hear the stories, these men that were on, that were there and were part of it, then had to go pick up the dead bodies of their fellow soldiers. So the mental trauma alone and then, I mean, I support it 100%. I also think we should probably send the league, a city, the League of California Cities should also be doing the same thing and asking all of their cities to send in a letter. It should not just be the Bay Area, it should be the entire state.
Just to speak to that, in our last mayor's conference, the mayor's conference of Contra Costa did, as a conference, send a letter of support as well.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Pittsburgh Mayor Chanel Skiles Preston spoke about it and was urging cities to take part and was urging the conference to collectively support the idea. I 100% agree as well. It needs to happen. Very overdue, fully in support.
Absolutely in full support of the exoneration. You talk about the things that they had to go through afterwards and the families had to go through and the lack of benefits that are afforded them for their service to their country. It needs to be changed.
I completely agree. So at this time, do I have a motion for this item? Yes.
I heard a letter of support. Do you want a proclamation or is it the same thing in your mind?
If we could do both. Well, I'm sorry, it's not, I'll let you.
I'm with the mayor. I'm kind of emotional because I'm so excited, but yes, a proclamation.
Okay, so is that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the city pass a resolution in support, supporting the exoneration of the Port Chicago 50 by sending a letter and I'm making a proclamation.
And I will second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye. It is unanimous. Moving on to item H2.2. Councilmember Mendoza, well, let me read this request. Request from Councilmember Mendoza for staff to present on police department costs assessed for community events and the economic development grants program procedures. Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, I think this needs to come back to us for review. So we had not been doing this and all of a sudden we hear that events are getting charged back for their police department. And I have a couple of reasons I'm scared of it. If you look at cities like Clayton, they're starting to charge back for the events and events are shutting down because the event holders can no longer pay for certain city fees and have their events. The other thing is, these are some of the same entities that we're giving grants to. So like, on one hand, we're giving you money. On the other hand, we're taking money away. Our residents love their events and I think we need to figure this out because I think we're going to see a lot of our events going away and that's not something I want to do. I don't want to become Clayton and get rid of events and cause all this chaos in their town and not feel like we're family friendly. And I, part of our police department, I think that is what we pay for. We, as residents, we pay taxes for them to come and police at events. I don't think that, I understand we need to recoup some, but I think we need to figure it out because we don't want to lose this as part of who we are. And while I know we had a fee structure, I wish it would have come to council first. So I wanted to come back. I want to understand exactly what was the catalyst? Why did it happen? What's the financial impact? Were we losing money? But it's something we need to understand and I think our residents need to understand and event organizers need to understand as well.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open public comments.
This is the time to comment on this item. No comments or receipt via email. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person and your microphone will be muted. I see I have one speaker in person. Denise Duran, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret, for seeing my yellow form. I am so appreciative of this being brought back. It's absolutely, if you're not, if you don't help to put together these events and go through the process of figuring out how to make it all come together. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce who is very fortunate to have so many supporters and who who also are providing the, some of the grants that we do get for our events. It is a very real situation. If we don't, we can't do it for net zero because it actually ends up costing us money. And so that being said, we need the police support. Absolutely. We need the public work support. Absolutely. It's sort of an interesting dichotomy, if you will, because we're here talking about housing and all of the expenses that go along with that or with the schools. And how do we pay for that in terms of the facilities? It's, how do we create the structure to support people who need to get paid for the work that they're doing while also being able to provide the resources and opportunities for people who like their events? We all like our events. So it's, I'm so glad that this is coming back and that this has become an issue that does need thoughtful thoughtful exploration. So anything that I can do to be of help, happy to do so. And just appreciate the time. And again, always appreciating the work that goes into all of this. So thank you for taking that time to look at this.
Thank you. I have an additional speaker in person. Greg, go ahead.
Good evening again, council. As some used to call me Mr. Cornfest, put a few events on in this town over the last 25 years. Thank you, Councilman Mendoza, for bringing this forward. I think it's great. You're exactly correct. One of the things that's kind of interesting when we do all these budgets and yes, I'm part of the chamber, but I'm also part of Rotary and part of the Police Activities League. So I put events on for multiple different organizations. And that's always what comes into play is that, you know, we're getting a grant or we're getting some money from the city and that money is really just to reimburse the fees that we're being charged, whether it be for police services, for garbage services, public work. So you're right, the money comes in on the one hand and it really, we're really just giving it back to the city. So that kind of works out nice. It kind of offsets some of those costs. And the chief knows, totally pro-police and support and I volunteer myself. What I think we need to look at with this situation, we have to have the police there, but what happens, and again, it's probably a staffing issue, the police that are working and being paid at the events are usually on overtime. So it costs the event organizer a little bit more money than a regular police officer because we're paying time and a half. And I don't know if they're still doing it, but back in the day, we would not only get the bill for time and a half, but whatever the additional costs were for that associated employee. So we were paying, you know, hundreds of dollars an hour for police. So I think what we should look at is we definitely need to have our police there. But maybe we could supplement it more with private security. Because we can get a private security person to walk around, have that police presence for $25 an hour instead of $75 or $100 an hour. So I think we should look at that. The other requirement that we used to have, again, back in the day, and when I say that, this is in the years 2000 and 2001. Some of you maybe weren't even born then. But one of the requirements is that we had to have private. But one of the requirements is that we had to have private security, I mean civilian security, event security. So that at these events, we had a group of people who had on a shirt that said "security." Obviously, what their purpose is, is just to be the eyes and the ears for the police. But when I ran the Corn Fest, we had a whole bunch of security people. They all had radios, and the lead security person that had that radio also had a direct radio to the police department. So as the civilian, the resident security people saw something, we didn't want them to react, you know, we wanted to be a good witness, but they could immediately pick up the radio and say, here's the situation. Then that person could immediately contact the police and just have that support there. So I think it's a great conversation. If you decide to have some sort of a subcommittee meeting or a separate offline thing, you guys got my number, call me, and I'd be happy to give you some free advice.
I have no additional speaker cards, and I see no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comment, move into council discussion.
I would be in support of bringing this back and having a further discussion.
Okay, see, no more discussion. Do we have a motion?
So I will make a motion that the staff, and actually, I want, I want to hear from Tim because the bug stops with you. This was a big one. This is a pretty big one. So I'd like Tim Ogden to bring, please bring back why this happened, what the catalyst was, who made the decision, the dollar impact, full-time versus overtime, and do we have to do this? And then it's a decision as a council we make. We've been absorbing this cost. Do we want to continue absorbing the cost? So what's the pros and cons? Or charging it back, and do we have to charge the whole percent, the whole amount back? That's my motion. Second?
We have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving into item H 2.4, request from Vice Mayor Meyer for a summary of significant, did I skip one? I did. I'm sorry. I saw that it wasn't midnight yet, and I was so excited, I skipped right to the end. Item H 2.3, request from Councilmember Mendoza for amendments to Brentwood Municipal Code to Prohibit Backyard Rentals and Regulate Parties in Residential Zones. Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, I think it's, we all heard what happened, and I think we need to get it under control. And I don't think it's even amendments, because I think we already have laws around not having businesses like this. I just think we need to clarify it. I need to, I think we need to find a way to work with the police department. I don't know how it is, Chief, but when people call in and they think we need a process for, they think a party is going on, that's a paid-for party or something's out of control, how do we deal with that? Because, you know, I do have the people that are like, well, if I'm having a party and it's my family and friends, how can you differentiate? I don't know how we do that, but we need to find a way, and we need to empower our police department to not, to not feel like we're going to be upset if they go like check on a party, and people are like, oh, you sent the police to my party. Well, that's their job, and given what happened, we need to follow up. So we need to just strengthen the wording, I think, in our municipal code. Do a lot of community outreach. I know community enrichment is reactive on all this stuff, but I think we might need to be proactive. Because after this, I went online and looked for short-term rentals. I found a bunch in Brentwood. They're not allowed. So I think once a quarter, we need to start, we need to peruse, you know, for short-term rentals and things like that that we think might be a problem, because that's where you're going to find them. I don't know if it's once every other month, or what do we do for the next year or so, looking for parties online, being this like investigative person like our residents are doing. But we need a proactive approach to this instead of being reactive on this one. And I know that's not our, the way we do things, but I, we can't see this happen again. It's just too heartbreaking, and it's awful, and people are still suffering from it.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open public comments. Margaret?
If you're in person, please file a speaker's card with the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I have no speaker cards, and I see no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comment, move into council discussion or a motion.
Okay. So I think we do need to amend some of the, and I'll go back. I think we do need to amend our municipal code, section 17.796.003, short-term rentals prohibited. It talks about, I think we need to extend it to the backyard. Because it talks about no residential dwelling unit. And my concern was, is that defined dwelling unit as inside? Because a lot of these, there's rental companies that you can rent pools out. I saw them for Brentwood. A lot of people are renting their pool out and conducting business from pool rentals. So I would like to make sure that we are not just saying that the dwelling unit, does it encompass the backyard? Some people are renting their backyards out for weddings and other events. Someone even suggested, I rent my backyard out for a wedding because it's so pretty, but no, thank you. I think we need to extend that and make sure we define what dwelling unit is. I did look at government code, and I didn't see the definition of the dwelling unit. So I think we need to not, I mean, it says pursuant to government code, but I think we also need to add in our definition of what a residential dwelling unit is. And if it doesn't extend to backyards, then we need to extend it to backyards.
I think the only addition to the short-term rental that we keep discussing is, well, I'm not renting it, I'm just charging people to use my backyard while I'm there, which has to be included in that ordinance. It can't be done.
So then we would have to look at two different codes, right? One is the short-term rental, and one is the business license. One, like maybe clearly defining that you cannot get a business license for a party on your property kind of thing? I don't know how that would work. That would be staffs investigating.
Just to clarify about the business licenses, they're not a regulatory device? They're just a tax. And so people can pay the tax, and the form specifically says, this is just a tax. You can't, if you can't do things and violate the code. So that's probably not the tool that you want to use, because again, it's just a payment of a tax. But the other areas of the code to examine, that would be more appropriate.
I think I read, isn't there a part of the code that says like, you can't, like if you have a business, like there's rules under which you can have a business out of home, right?
Home occupation ordinances.
So that's I guess what we would have to look at.
Those would be the other sections you might want to look at as well.
And just to articulate more, that's Title 17 zoning that we need to look at, Article, I think, four. This, I think it's Article four, that we need to go ahead and take a look at the zoning requirements or what people can do in their home or not.
And process question.
Article three, I apologize.
Process question, any Title 17 amendments require planning commission approval first? One of the things we've done in the past is sometimes come to you first, get good, solid direction, then take it to planning commission, then it comes back to you for final approval. Or we can vet it with them and then have it come to you twice instead of, two meetings instead of three. So what's your pleasure on, how you'd like to process that?
I would like it to come to us first.
We can do that.
Okay, there's no further comment on this item. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to spend staff time reviewing our home-based business portion of our municipal code.
Short-term rentals and home occupancy.
So home, yeah, so home occupancy and then the short-term rentals. As well as, two amendments to municipal code. But we also talked about the police department, and I don't know how to put that in here. So I can't do that right now, right? Well, we can talk about that. I guess I can call the chief, and we can talk about how we should move forward on that one. Okay, so we'll just, a motion just to review the home occupancy-based businesses and the short-term rentals. To clar, oh, go ahead.
I don't know how, why she wouldn't be able to add the police part. On her request, it says, and regulate parties in residential zones. So regulation of parties would be to figure out a way of enforcement with our police department, am I correct?
We would approach enforcement from either direction. Code enforcement, and they have a certain set hours, police department 24/7 for criminal-type-related activities, and they collaborate together to make sure that the, all the codes are all adhered to.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I just want to make sure that they know that we're in support of you guys going. Because we do hear like, oh, you guys are party poopers. I heard it in Dolphin Park a ton. I don't care that people call us party poopers when it comes to safety at all whatsoever. And I want you guys to feel safe that we're not going to be all upset if you are a party pooper.
Yes, and in addition to the municipal codes and so forth that have been mentioned, we do have the laws we have to abide by when it comes to parties in people's homes as far as Fourth Amendment goes, so that does play a factor in it also. But we can talk more offline on exactly what we can do.
And then when it comes to the regulation, I do want to talk about that proactive approach versus the reactive approach that we usually have with code enforcement. So that's, that's a little bit more work, but I think it's important to do right now, especially since we're seeing the increase in those short-term rental parties.
And based on yours' observation of what's online now, we already directed Community Enrichment to check out the website regularly, at least quarterly, if not more regularly. There are an all-time caseload right now in code enforcement, but we'll make time to be proactive on those short-term rentals that are clearly blatantly violating our policies.
Okay, so the zoning, the police, the proactive, all of that is clear for the motion, or do you want me to restate it?
I think, given there were subsequent discussion after you started your motion, it'd probably be better to restate it, just one clarification. We've been using the term "home occupancy." I think it's "home occupation."
Home occupation.
Yes, when you said it, it was bothering me what the issue was, but you are an occupant of your home. I think it's "home occupation."
Okay, so we're going to review our municipal code when it comes to home occupation businesses. We're going to review our code when it comes to short-term rentals to make sure that the dwelling unit includes the backyard. We're going to have a more proactive approach when it comes to community enrichment. And the police department will also be more proactive when it comes to the parties, and we will talk about what that looks like during discussion when it comes back to us. What, we know, we'll partner with the police department to make sure it works with them.
Okay. We did not.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is that request clear? Okay.
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We will move into item H 2.4, request from Vice Mayor Meyer for a summary of significant housing legislation adopted in 2022, 23, and pending, and its impact on the city of Brentwood.
Thank you. This is something we've done before, especially since the housing legislation that has been coming down the pipeline recently has just been piled on top. So sometimes it's a little tough to understand what we are facing when making some of our decisions around development and land use. And so I would really just like to have an updated educational piece for residents to understand. I think even terms like builder's remedy and ministerial approval, things like that. I think when we, when a, when TrueMark is coming to us, when this housing element update comes to us, I think there's not always a clear understanding of what we can or cannot do. And I really just want that education to be ongoing. It's a matter of kind of transparency and communication and just being clear so people understand. There's always a lot of buzz about, just turn it down, just say no. And of course, we all know we're not able to do that, especially with some of the latest legislation. So my goal is really just for education. I know that we've got some things coming down the road that are going to automatically include this, but I think as we have developments come forward, that maybe there's a minimal version of something that can be a part of the staff presentation.
Thank you.
Once there's some council discussion, we'll clarify that motion.
Public comment first. So at this time, we'll open public comment.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I have no speaker cards, and there is no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comment, move into council discussion.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. The ongoing makes it, I think, a little bit more difficult. So I was thinking about this, and I don't know what everyone would think about having like a town hall or it's like some type of, here are the updates, that we do them periodically throughout the year on housing amendments or changes in the housing law and legislation, and give people the opportunity to, one, get an educational opportunity, but also to be heard, to have a moment to address how they feel and without it being a meeting. So I don't think it would come from council, but more so staff. I think maybe really helpful to have available.
I think it's a good idea, and Tim was talking about, I can't remember what the item was that was going to be coming to us in November. Maybe this could, that, a town hall could be around that, planned around that.
Yeah, part of your initial request was also to include any pending legislation of housing impacts that could affect Brentwood, and perhaps increase the frustration for the residents and also the council on what decisions you have to make and what you can and can't do. The legislative session is through the middle of October, where the governor has to sign all the bills that are moved forward through the legislature. And so post-November, we usually get a kick-out from the California cities who summarizes a lot of these housing bills, and that might be a good package easily dispensable and posted on their website or town hall. I would just note that most of this is very complex and boring to the lay resident until it's in their backyard, and then they're very curious about what the city can and can't do about it. We just know from the housing element workshops with all of the public outreach and multiple languages trying to get engagement, it was challenging, right? But we can certainly try to schedule a town hall and try to educate those who are there to hear it. We could do a workshop before council meeting as well, so the council can participate as well and make sure everyone's on the same page. But post-legislative session, November-ish, might be a good timing with the latest bills. You know, some of the bills were impacted by today or past five, six years ago, but now the developers or lawsuits or court precedences are just now making them more popular and accessible. And with arena numbers and housing elements across the state, they're still trying to get certified. There's a lot of different housing issues going on that everyone's struggling to understand and grasp. But we'll do our best. We're still learning a lot of them ourselves as we just had July 1st kicked in some new ones. Like you can put a residential structure in a commercial-zoned property, and we can't do much about it. So everybody's equally frustrated, but we can come back with some educational materials once the legislative session's done. We will note for the public who's participating now that we do have posted on our website now a list of housing bills from the 2021 legislative session with some clarifying comments about how each bill works and what its impacts are. And we just posted 2022's just in the last week or so. So those are up, 2023, again, post-October will be available.
So, good point about the legislative session. I think that's a good thing to build it off of. Although November and December are kind of tough for a town hall, it might be something to even look at in January for the sake of getting better participation. But I would also say that I think as items come to us on our agenda, that will be impacted by whether it's a five-year-old bill that's now getting, you know, going full force forward, or something newer, like just passed in July, I think it's still appropriate in a staff report to call out what we're dealing with, what we're going to have to work around or work within, or what restrictions are now in place that might not have been in place last time something like this happened. So I mean, I know this, we have to be careful about that. We have to be very cautious and follow the legislation closely. But I just want to make sure that as this is important to people, as an item comes to an agenda, and it's something that people are interested enough to follow, that we help them understand why we are making the decisions we're making.
I mean, even now, we have three projects on our list that we can't do anything about. They can, you know, they're exercising bills, the builder's remedy, and then what's the other one? I can't remember the one on... Well, I'm just saying, there's ways to educate them with the projects we have when we do the update, right? Because people, these things aren't real to people until you see, until you see it and what, how that translates. And I think that having this with the projects that correlate to each one, I think, would be helpful. Because I think right now, people see these projects on our website like, oh, well, you know, the council can deny that, and it's like, no, I can't. As much as I want to, I can't. Or, you know, I may want to, depending on what the project is.
And with all the changes in the law, the only thing I'd add is I'm stopped constantly when I walk my dog or when I walk to the mailbox asking. So we put you on council, what are you going to do to stop it? And I literally had a conversation the other day saying, if this comes because of this specific law, without going into specifics, there's nothing I can do. Zero. And it's, and they give me a look of bewilderment and like, what do you mean? You're a council member. And I think having that educational piece helps, helps us as well. Deliver it, it's a softer blow to know that we can't do anything about it, so.
And then they also asked like, well, why can't, it was, international. And then they also asked like, well, why can't, it was international night out, this topic was one of the top topics. And like, why don't you sue? And it's like, it's whack-a-mole. You're suing, like, you beat them on one bill, they're going to come back on another and we're going to have to do education around another bill, right? So it's, it's really frustrating, but it is the number one thing.
I think we need to make sure that when we're, when we're calling these things out, when we're bringing them up as part of an agenda, specific item, that we also explain some of the glossary. Like again, builder's remedy, for example. I think it's important that people understand not just the bill number, but when they hear that term, what does it mean to them?
I think it would be helpful if we had someone like from the league come when we have these town halls, because I get the privety and you all get the privilege of hearing people speak specifically about what the league is doing and we get to give it back, but it's nothing like hearing the actual people who are working on it talk about it. So I think it would be great when we have these, not to just do it at our, to have the city staff do it, but actually find our allies to come present as well. Might be helpful.
You know what we could do is when the league has their legislative update, there's no reason why we can't stream it. Like they have legislative updates that I sit and, I mean, we sit and we listen to them. So, and they go through all the bills and the housing bills, I mean, they go through all bills, police bills, housing bills. Housing bills is probably the one they spend the most time on. So, I mean, we should stream it here. If you want, come watch it here, bring your popcorn, you can watch your, and get your education this way. So I think education's important, however many times, so that people understand unless there is a constitutional amendment or the legislator changes 100%, this is not going to change.
If there's nothing else, I would like to make a motion to spend staff time and resources on this item, bring it forward and maybe look at a popcorn machine. That last part was a joke.
Okay, so we have a motion?
And I'll second it.
First and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?